Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Committee of the Whole meeting for May 3rd, 2012. The roll call, please.
Mayor Ron is absent tonight. Mayor Pro Tim Scott.
Here.
The clerks here. Trustee Emory.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee Clebina.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Trustee Seneca.
Here.
Manager Searle.
Here.
Attorney Zemanek.
Here.
Public Works Director May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
Deputy Police Chief Gunther.
Here.
Fire Chief Wise.
Here.
Acting Community Development Director Malik.
Here.
Village Planner Ziegler.
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern.
Here.
Human Resource Director Casey.
Okay, everyone, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda is the Village Board minutes. Consider approving the minutes for the Committee of the Whole meeting held April 12th, 2012, and the Village Board meeting of April 16th, 2012.
Will you approve, Emory?
On Thursday?
Oh, oh, sorry. I'm going to put this stuff down.
Comments, questions, or corrections?
I'm with Ellen. Let's just vote on everything tonight.
Okay. Move on. Open forum. I don't think there is any open forums tonight, so we'll go to reports. The mayor left no reports for me tonight. I have nothing. We will be having, I take that back, the mayor did have something, lifesaving awards for the fire department crews will be on Monday, May 7th, and the swearing of Fire Chief Dave Weiss will be on Monday, May 7th. And then it's it from me.
I really have nothing tonight.
Okay. The attorney?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Mr. Searle.
I just wanted to announce that we're, previously talked about a joint administration public works committee meeting on Monday, May 7th. We're going to postpone that or cancel that and reschedule that for Thursday, May 17th, at 6 o'clock here in the Village Hall Board Room. We'll have our consultant, Eilers, to answer some questions, board members may have about the bonding issue that we discussed during the budget workshops. That's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee items, starting with trustee Nero.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Trustee Clebina.
A couple of things, just a reminder that this Saturday, May 5th, is our shredding event right across the street here from Village Hall. It's in the morning. I think they're going to be done by 12, so try to make sure you're there. You can bring up to two boxes. Then Friday, May 11th, we're going to be starting our electronic recycling, and that again is a morning event starting, I think, any idea what time is it, like 7?
I believe 7 o'clock.
7 to what, like 11 or something?
Right.
Yeah, 7 to 11 then. So Friday, the 11th. And I did see a TV set sitting out on the curb side, so people have not gotten the message. They can't do that, but hopefully, hopefully your guys picked it up and will get it at the recycling. And then also, since trustees can't speak next Monday, Sunday, May 13th, is Mother's Day, so I want to wish everybody Happy Mother's Day, and I believe sharing Mother's Day is Happy Birthday to Lee and Sue. Thank you. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Fleming.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Trustee Seneca.
Thank you. Just wanted to congratulate the chamber on the putting contest that they had on Tuesday in the rain. It was well attended and a lot of fun. They did have one person qualify for the 60-foot putt to win $5,000, but it got rained out, and that's going to be rescheduled for a different date. So it's not trustee Nero, and it's not me, but there is somebody that definitely qualified. And I also wanted to congratulate the Westmont Rotary on the well-attended and fun reverse raffle. Several of us were there and had a great time. They raised a lot of money towards our scholarships, and our Rotary in Westmont is just so active and does so many good things, and that was just one more thing. So congratulations to them, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Trustee Emory.
I would like to put, ask the manager if he put on the next committee, the whole agenda, the issue again for a consent agenda, so that we can move things along when there are things which we know are routine or whatever, that we can put them on a consent agenda. Of course, always with the caveat that if a board member has a question or a concern, they can pull it off the consent agenda. And also, manager Searle, the combined admin and finance, when you have it for 6 o'clock on May 17th? We were going to make it earlier at 5:30 because it's a combined meeting.
Yeah, we had talked about that.
If it was one.
Yeah. If that's, can we do that with the consultant?
We'll make it work.
Okay.
5:30?
Yeah. So we don't run into problems with the regular meeting. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Public hearing, electric aggregation. Board to hold a public hearing on the plan of governance and operation for electric aggregation.
Just to give some introductory remarks, this is something required by statute. We must hold two public hearings prior to the adoption of a plan of operation governance, which is required by the statute. As you recall, the referendum question passed here in Westmont barely. It was 50.44 percent. We have been actively having discussions with the Village of Downers Grove about trying to combine our households to bid out the demand load as one group. We think we can get a better price for every, both communities' residents that way. We have an item on the agenda tonight to actually hire a consultant, Jim Beldon from Beldon Energy, who is here in the audience, and that item will be coming up later. And we also have an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Downers Grove. I know, I received some questions this week about, you know, why it's being set up this way. The reason we're combining our effort with Downers Grove is we believe that by increasing the number of households and thereby increasing the load, we will get better pricing for the potential bidders. And as you know, in our community, we have an awful lot of multifamily homes. Downers Grove has more single-family homes. I suspect a number of those homes are probably bigger footprint-wise than ours, so the load may actually work to the benefit of our residents. So that is something we've talked with them. They understand that concept, and they're supportive of it. We had a meeting as late as this afternoon. They had their first public hearing this week. It went very well on the governance plan, which is up on our website. It's been up there since Tuesday or Wednesday, I believe, in draft form. The only comment that they got that required a change was to change the opt-out period from a two-week period to a three-week period. And as I said, we met, staff did, this afternoon, and we agreed. Both communities agreed that we don't see an issue with that. Obviously, we'll open it up for comment tonight, see what our residents may think, and if we have significant questions or suggestions, we'll take that back with Downers Grove. We're trying to coordinate these on a relatively fast-track schedule because we want to take advantage of trying to get our price locked in before everybody else does. We think there's some advantage in doing so, and that we'll get better prices. There, you may have seen publicity recently, there's a few groups of communities around in the Chicago Land area that have gone out, and they've gotten some pretty good pricing. So we don't, we don't want to be the last group to do that. So our next public hearing will be on the 17th. We're hoping to issue our request for proposal on the 18th. We will issue that simultaneously with Downers Grove, and we hope to have responses back on that on the 29th, and then we hope to bring to our board on the 31st, kind of a short list of recommended suppliers. What both communities are looking for ultimately is authority for the managers in each respective community to pick the ultimate best supplier based on the criteria that you've defined in the, in the plan of governance. And we feel if we do it that way, we're going to be able to get the best possible price that we can for our residents. So that's kind of the introduction I wanted to give, and I guess at this point I would suggest that we just open it up for comments from the public as a, as a public hearing.
Any comments from the public? I don't see any right now, so. Comments from trustees?
Certainly could do that. I think.
Are we going to have their?
We will have to close the public hearing at some point.
Okay.
Procedurally, but once that's closed, then we would not, you know, have another public hearing until on the 17th. So, you know, if there is anyone here that does have any comments, you know, this would be the time to make those comments, essentially.
Anyone? I guess we'll close the public comments.
Okay.
Okay. Unfinished business. Tobacco dealer licensing. Board to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 22 Businesses, Article 13 Tobacco Dealers of the Village Code of Ordinances to create business license requirements and regulations for tobacco sales.
Thank you. I think John Zemanek has passed out copies of the revised ordinance based on feedback that was received at the last committee discussion and Committee of the Whole discussions. The changes that you'll see are that there is an initial application licensing fee. For Class A, the licensing fee is $200, and for Class B, it's $500. And then, instead of that being the annual fee, there will be a flat $100 renewal rate for both types of licenses, for their annual, like, business license renewal. In addition to that, we just wanted to clarify, there were some questions that had come up regarding the existing newsstand convenience stores that we already have in town. Those would be issued a Class B license, and then any new businesses would have to go through the filing as the, with the $500 filing fee and the full background check. So this was one of the, one of the reasons for that recommendation is because sometimes those are the types of businesses that can kind of morph into becoming something other than they identify at the beginning. I'm not sure if D.C. Gunther has anything to add.
Very comprehensive. Any questions?
Thank you.
Comments from trustees?
Just a comment to point out, there is a section in Chapter 22 pertaining to all licenses that allows for proration of the initial license, depending on, in six-month periods, and I made a reference to that in this ordinance, unless there was some direction from staff or the trustees that you either did not want to prorate the license, initial license fee, or wanted to do it in a different manner. But that's pretty consistent with how we treat liquor licenses also.
Makes sense?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, me too.
Yep.
Okay. And that'll be on the agenda for vote on Monday. Okay. Number four, downtown development permit for West Burlington. Board to consider an ordinance approving a development grant request for Uptown Cigars, a cigar, cigarette, and grocery store in the downtown B1 district at 4 West Burlington Avenue. How are you?
So we, I was here last meeting, and you guys told me to come for this one.
And we will know by now today that you guys are going to pass for the license for the...
Could you speak a little louder, please?
Okay. Come on.
Okay. I was here last meeting, and you guys told me to come for this one, and you guys are going to give me the answer that we're going to get the license or not.
That's not on tonight's meeting. That'll be on Monday night's meeting.
I'll be Monday.
But you can tell us in the public what your business is about and what your plans are.
That I already told for the last meeting, so should I have to do it again?
I mean, we want to open up a cigar shop, Uptown Tobacco. Used to be there about six months ago. They closed down, and we are interested in opening it again. Just same layout, that's what we are interested in.
Okay. Trustee comments?
I think we asked a lot of questions the last time. I'm still a little bit concerned about the term grocery, because when I hear grocery, I think grocery, and it sounds more like it's going to be things that would appeal to young children.
I mean, we're going to be having only very minor candies and gum and soft drinks, that's it.
Okay.
We're not going to have chips. We're not going to have a coffee. We're not going to have donuts. We're not going to have any kind of flour or anything.
Okay.
We're going to be selling it.
Okay. I'm still kind of a little bit concerned that you're going to have things that appeal to children and then things that appeal to people that have to be a certain age to purchase.
I don't know if you're familiar with any cigar shop or not, but it's just like convenience for people who comes in as a customer.
Gotcha.
If they're looking for a candy or just a snack to carry, that's all.
Well, actually, a true cigar shop does not have those items in it.
I don't think the Humidor has anything like that, do they?
No. No. They don't. And when you use the word grocery within the terminology here, even though you say it's going to be candies and gum and maybe a few soft drinks or whatever, what that does is, then that opens a door. If you wanted to add something else to that at any given time, you could. So it's either strictly a cigar shop, true cigar shop, or the other.
Previous owner used to have everything.
I know what the previous owner had there.
I mean, this is what we...
And they came, they came and went. They were closed, they were open, they were closed, they were open.
I think that place was, used to be there for last 12 years, I believe.
No.
10 to 12 years, and then two years ago, somebody else bought it.
Mm-hmm.
And then four, five months ago, they shut down the door, I think.
Yeah.
And I think they used to carry it.
Is your shop here going to be similar to the one in Park Ridge?
Yes.
Well, in Park Ridge, you do sell chips and stuff like that. I was in there last week.
Chips, we don't sell. We sell candy, soft drinks, gums.
I was there, and I bought a bag of chips, but be that as it may, the person who rang up the cash register didn't ring up any tax either. It was a no sale, and that's something I know this board and this community would not be happy with, because that means we're not getting our sales tax. And that happened to me personally. So I'm personally not in favor of this business coming into town.
I can tell you that my vote on Monday will also be no, because if the way that you run a business when you sell things is to ring them up as if there hasn't been a sale, it's illegal, and it's not how we do business in Westmont. So because there was, you know, the same owner of a business, and it was without question done, I don't want that in my town.
Any other comments from trustees?
Just a clarification. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Was there testimony that there were, this business existed under two previous owners, and two previous owners failed, and this is the third attempt to have the same type of business at this location?
I believe we had at least, Shannon, we covered at least one same type of business as a cigar shop failed, and I don't know that if we covered it.
I don't remember the second one. I think we only talked about the first.
I believe that the one that just recently went out would be the third smoke shop that did go out of business.
But I think we only talked about one before that, though.
I think so.
That came before the board, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes, there was a parking variance that went before the board.
Right, right.
So that's certainly also a factor to know that when we're trying to have a successful downtown, and we want to tiff the downtown, to know that a similar business in recent history has been short-lived, and this would be the third attempt at such a business, it's not a good fit for that place.
Yeah, and I would agree. On top of the sales tax issue, to be honest with you guys, from the get-go, I just had this bad vision on what it was going to be. I asked you when you first came in if you'd been to the Humidor, and it's on Ogden Avenue. That's what I envisioned, something, a cigar shop being a downtown Westmont, personally. I would be in support of something like that, but something...
It's not that big of a place, though, you know?
Yeah, but the quality. I don't mean the exact same, but just the quality, the quality of furnishings, the quality of decor, the overall vision of what that is. And I think that's what I want to see in my downtown, so I don't, or in our downtown. I just, I can't be for something that, to me, reminds me of a convenience store, something that I just don't want down there.
So I think one other issue we have is that we have no business plan before us either.
Yeah. We don't know what to expect, you know, and I...
That we like to see. So we appreciate you coming in. This will be on a vote unless there's any other comments.
So when we're going to find out? Monday?
Monday.
Do we have to attend that on Monday?
No.
No.
How are we going to find out?
You can call the Village Hall.
Or you can, you can come if you wish to.
Come if you want to. It's like, you don't have to, but change if you want to.
It's open, you can...
As you guys said, it's, I mean, some of the people are not in favor. I mean, is it because of the, having a grocery or maybe not?
How about sales tax?
Yeah, I'm very concerned that, that one of our trustees went into your shop and made a purchase and was not offered a receipt and was not charged tax. That concerns me.
Can I ask you one thing? Where, exactly what address did you go to? Because I do not sell chips. That's why I'm asking.
The one right down the street from the theater in downtown Park Ridge.
Yeah, because we do not sell chips.
Candy bar, chips, and I bought a newspaper.
Candy bar, we sell, yes, I agree. But chips, we don't sell. That's why I was confused.
Okay.
That's why I asked you.
But in addition, there are other reasons that we articulated. There's probably at least four of them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
That'll be on a vote for Monday.
Okay.
Number five, Taste of Westmont Special Use Request and Fee Waiver ATM. Board to consider an ordinance approving the following request from the Westmont Special Events Corporation, WSCC. One, special use request to permit two temporary automated teller machines ATM locations in the B1 general business district during the Taste of Westmont. A, the intersection of North Cass and Irving. B, the Manning School parking lot at 200 North Linden Avenue. And two, fee waiver request. Hi, how are you?
Pretty good about yourselves?
Good.
All right. For the Taste of Westmont this year, we want to try a little something different. We want to try to add in some ATM machines throughout the event to kind of give people more, you know, a convenience to go in and get money if they need to. It's, the way we figure it is it's going to help improve, like, downtown business. People are going to want to try and spend more, spend more time at, you know, our commercial booth, food booths, even carnival, downtown business, and our alcohol tent as well. Like you said, the locations was going to be at Manning in the parking lot and the intersection of Irving and Cass. We're just depending on where the carnival's going to be before we figure out where that's going to go. Once these ATM machines are in place, they are not going to go anywhere. They're going to be locked down. You're not going to be, no one's ever going to try to steal it, so it's, and it's, throughout the night, we do have our overnight security to check on it, as well as the company also monitors the ATMs overnight with security cameras on the actual ATMs themselves. The transaction fee that we, we're still kind of going under negotiation, but what we figure, what they've told us is they search around the area for about the average of transaction fees and go from there, and that's where it's based off of. One of the reasons why we want this is we are a nonprofit organization. We are financially self-sufficient, and we do get a cut from the transaction fees, a percentage, to help support the WSCC, and that's why we kind of want to bring this in as well. And then we are asking for the special use permit fee waiver, because we are a nonprofit organization, and we're trying to help improve downtown business, and we want to try to do what we can.
Sounds good to me. I have absolutely no problem with it.
Me either.
I think it's a great idea.
And we're going to try to help you make that happen.
Yep. I do have a question, though.
Sure.
I believe I brought it up before, and I thought I saw that the carnival had their own ATM, which I don't know if they ever came to us for permission for. Are they bringing their own ATM? Are they going to come to us for permission? Or are you going to be the only ATM out there?
That's, that's part of this as well.
So this will cover their ATM as well as yours? Or is it the same machine?
No, they're different. It's from two, it's from, the carnival has their own as well as, these are from a separate company that we're getting ours from.
Okay.
No. No. They would have to, you can't, you can't encompass their ATM machine into this request. It would have to be a separate, they would have to ask for that request to have an ATM machine there.
They could have piggybacked with this request, but my concern is the public notice identified two inters, two locations for, two ATM machines for WSCC, and didn't make any mention of that. So I'd hate to have a legal technicality.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pose a problem. Now, we've got some time until July to get that approval in place.
I mean, they're not going to have an issue with it. We're going to certainly give them same consideration. We can't, I mean, John, tell us what we can and cannot separate out, but there's a fee waiver request. I'm not for a fee waiver on the carnival's ATMs.
No.
No. So I think that what I would like to do is to withdraw this from Monday's agenda and then put on the next agenda the ones for WSCC, and then if you, you know, if the carnival wants you to come in and make the pitch for them, that's one thing, or if they want to do it themselves, but I'll tell you right now, I won't, I won't vote for a fee waiver request on the carnival's ATMs.
How about if we just amended to then allowing the one, so they get their fee waiver, and the other people, because it's a separate request, and if they're not going to wait...
This is only for the...
These are both WSCC.
I don't see why we can't still just vote on it Monday, and the carnival's in charge of coming in for theirs. It's apples and oranges. It's two different...
Yeah, they have to go through planning and zoning first, and certainly the WSCC, since the carnival probably is an out-of-town operator, can have WSCC as their agent process the request.
Yeah.
But, you know, this request has nothing to do with the carnival.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to find out, though, because they said two, and I'm presuming they meant one for them and one for the carnival, right?
They're going to have two different, two different ATMs.
Two for WSCC.
It'd be a third one if the carnival brings theirs.
Yeah. Because if you have Cass and Irving and then Manning School, the carnival's is closer towards Burlington.
Okay, I didn't know if they were last year. Just get it, okay, okay.
So the permission is only for them?
Right. That's what you're representing now, that this permission's only for WSCC. Yeah, it just says it is on the agenda. But, okay.
My suggestion would be tomorrow, someone, get on the phone, I'm assuming you're using Alpine Amusements again. Get on the phone to him and say, look...
I don't think there's even worked last year.
This is what needs, this is what you're going to need to do in order to have your ATM machines.
Well, they could also be there, because I thought I saw the ATM at the Red White and Barbecue, but I'm not positive, so I wasn't there last year, so I don't know if they brought it. But it's the same carnival paper. So they should probably be alerted that they do need to comment for permission in the procedure.
Two conditions in the ordinance. One requires WSCC to provide or place trash receptacles next to each ATM.
Oh, yeah.
Because the receipts pop out, people throw them on the ground if there's not a trash receptacle.
Good idea.
Also requires you to remove, once the taste is done for each year.
Oh, they'll come and pick it up.
They will be removed.
Yeah.
But this approval is for every year that WSCC is hosting and operating the taste, so you don't have to come back in subsequent years.
That's good.
Yeah, so...
Yahoo!
But the carnival would?
Yes.
Well, you can grant a special use for more than one year if you so choose for this event, and save them the opportunity, as long as it's the same operator and...
I think, I think there's some communities that don't even require approval.
I'm sure many don't.
I think we're pretty tight on it, but a lot of communities don't even care.
You know, there've been discussions in the past about things like garbage, safety, location, lighting, all those sort of things. And you've taken, you know, the board's taking it seriously, and you've got an ordinance that sets out the parameters. So unless you change that, that's the procedure.
Plus, as goofy as it sounds, the police need to know where they are so that when they have the pickup truck with the chain around it, try to drag it down the street at night is...
Well, the sparkers would be a giveaway.
Any other comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you for coming before us. We'll have it on the agenda for Monday vote. Number six, Oakwood Subdivision Homeowners Association License Agreement. Were to consider an ordinance approving a license agreement to permit the construction of replacement monument signs on village-owned property at the subdivision entrance at 35th Street and Oakwood Drive. And here it says at Oakwood Drive and Ogden. We're not doing all three though. Why are we here?
No. Signs we're doing is Oakwood Drive and 35th.
Okay.
At this time.
At this time.
And just to introduce myself, I'm Mark Nelson. I'm with the Oakwood Homeowners Association Board. Been on it for a few years, and I've been heading up this project over the past nine, nine to 12 months. You know, the sign, when you drive by, the two signs that are on the 35th and Ogden, it looks okay from a distance, but when you look up close, the, all the support blocks behind are extremely loose, and some of the rocks on the outside are already starting to fall off. So there's been significant deterioration. The monument is about 15 years old. It wasn't kept at the top, so water has gotten in over the years. It freezes, expands the rock. So it's, it's indeed of serious repair. We looked into getting it tuck-pointed and getting it repaired, and it's just much more cost-effective to replace it and get a nice, brand-new sign that, you know, our Oakwood community can be proud of. And, you know, not, that's kind of the short version. I'm happy to answer questions. Here's, as you can all see, the top right shows a picture of what we're doing, and it's just a, you know, nice, nice, cost-effective design that, that looks nice. It will last, you know, should last at least 20 years. And then there's, there's, there's kind of a picture of, just a bird's-eye view of the landscape that'd be going in around it. So it should have a lot of, a lot of pop and look really nice for the community. And it's something that we've already presented at our annual meeting to all the residents in our community, and it was unanimous vote for, for being supportive of it. You know, we've already taken it out, done the RFP process, you know, have selected the contractor, and he's, he's working with the village to get the appropriate, I'm working as well to get the appropriate permits to be, to begin construction with it. So literally at this point, we're just trying to get the licensing agreement buttoned up and, like I said, just get the necessary permits.
Shannon, any comments or?
It's, it's really a housekeeping matter, because there wasn't an agreement in place for the signs that went in as part of the original subdivision. So in order to do this replacement work, we looked at the issues of indemnification, et cetera, that were placed into the ordinance, which I think you have before you. The goal is in a few years to complete the sign replacement on the south end of the development, so along Ogden Avenue. And I believe the ordinance was written in such a way that they would not need to come back in the future.
So it would be all three?
All three.
Yeah.
For the eventual first, I didn't have anyone.
And can I clarify that? At the first location, which we've identified in the license agreement as parcel one, are there two signs?
Yes.
At that location? Okay.
Yes. That might have been the confusion we had earlier.
Yes. And then in parcel two, there's a third sign, and the license agreement does allow for them, as long as they have a plat of survey that identifies where the sign is to be located, and they present plans, what's the nature of the sign, it can be administratively handled. Okay. But a few comments about the term and termination of the agreement. And Mark and I had email exchanges back and forth and some revisions. The license agreement, because there's some expense on the homeowners association's part to get this sign put in in the first place, we've discussed having a 20-year term. The homeowners association could terminate at any time upon notice, and if they were to terminate this, they would have to remove the signs and any associated landscaping and restore the property. The village would not have any termination rights within the first two years unless there's a default by the homeowners association. Thereafter, we could only terminate if we had the need to use the right way for public purpose or in the event of a municipal emergency. If we have that need, then removal, removal of the sign and restoration would be the village's expense. After 20 years, when the agreement expires, or if it's extended, when it ever expires, they would have to remove the sign. And that's all set forth in here. And I think we're in agreement on the terms now.
Yeah.
Back and forth.
Yep. I still need it approved by our board, which we have a meeting next Thursday, but I've been leading the project, and I feel pretty confident that we'll come to an agreement on it.
There's no license fee for this. I think the assumption is, and what's stated in here, the village would continue to maintain the grounds around the sign. You would just be responsible for maintaining the sign, and if they come in for any associated landscaping, like a little flowerbed underneath the sign, they, they would be responsible for maintaining that.
Which they have been for forever.
Fifteen-plus years.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Mark, thanks for all the work you guys have done. The signs look really good. Appreciate it. Okay. Number seven, Library Book Loan Program. Were to consider a motion approving a request from the Friends of the Westmont Public Library, Novel Experience, and the Westmont Chamber of Commerce to place a book swap cart in the Westmont commuter train station.
Hi. I'm here representing the Friends of the Westmont Library and Novel Experience, because she couldn't make it tonight, and I guess the Chamber. He was at a awards dinner, and he thought he could get out early, and I went, have you been to awards dinners lately? So I'm not really here representing the library, but since I was one of the people pulling everyone together, I'm here. And I'm hoping you've reviewed the proposal, but basically, we're suggesting to put a book swap cart in the niche that's created between the Chamber's display and the plinth that's in the station. We would have our carpenter build something that makes it look somewhat seamless and complimentary or harmonizing with the wood piece that is there currently. The cart itself would be materials withdrawn from the library and/or donated materials both to the Westmont Library as well as to the Novel Experience. Both parties would be responsible for putting some materials there. The idea is that commuters can take an item off the cart and put a different item on the cart. My board was concerned as far as image was concerned, and we will make sure that at least the materials coming from the Westmont Library look decent. They're not the ratty copies that we're pitching out the door anyway.
I think a lot of train stations have those now.
Many do.
You see them everywhere.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's a good idea.
Any other trustee comments or?
Yeah, just real quick, if residents want to donate books to this, how do we do that? Just bring them to the library?
Well, residents can always donate books to the library. We accept them all the time, and some go into the collection and others are sold in the lobby book sale to raise money for the programs at the library. The Friends sell them, and then they donate the money. In fact, they've just graciously agreed to pay $1,500 toward our summer read program this year, so I'm really excited about that. But yes, residents can bring it to the, to the library, or if you're swapping materials, just take, just drop it off on the shelf, and the Chamber has agreed to include supervising the space. Novel Experience will also get over there. And I have two employees that ride the train, so we'll have, we'll have it covered pretty well.
Sounds good.
Plenty of people will locate it.
Yep.
There's one, one question. I, I think this is really a great idea, but I, John, I had put on the board action sheet, and I don't know if this would be a license situation, but I was concerned about making it clear the village is not liable if any of the books disappear.
We don't care.
I realize that.
These are not the books we care about.
Somebody down the line might care.
It's going to be a one-way swap.
Thank you.
Could be.
And that's typically probably how it works in other communities, but I, I don't know if that's something we need to do or worry about.
Well, you know, there is a question of consistency, because when, certainly when we talked about retail operators or ATM machines or cameras that have wanted to go in the train station, which is, the village doesn't even own the property. It...
Well, we own the station. We don't want to go in and around it.
We own the station itself. We've entered into license agreements. We can do a one-page license agreement with some...
I'm not sure who would, who would be the party is. Would it be all three entities? The Friends, Novel Experience, and the Chamber? It's kind of making this so complicated, but...
Yeah.
Somebody coming along and saying...
A layer of another ordinance or another agreement that we have to, for somebody to switch books out. I think it's...
Your concern is someone trips over the cart that's there. Someone, a book falls on the floor, someone slips and falls. The village gets sued because we made our facility...
We had a very nasty lawsuit when that station first opened, not over something like this, but just things sometimes you can't imagine can happen. And you're just, it's just part of the risk management process.
And the license agreement will say, we're not responsible for anything that happens.
We'd ask for indemnification, insurance proof.
We'd get sued anyhow, but with...
Yeah, we would.
Paper cut to the jugular.
We're just trying to shift liability.
No, I... I think the question that you raised is who would be the party that we'd be licensing with?
Yeah.
Because it's a coalition.
The Friends of the Library.
That's a not-for-profit, right?
Try to sue them. You can't find them, because they're, they're everywhere.
Or could we just say the Chamber's a sponsoring event, or a sponsoring agency, and just have them provide?
The easiest, if they're willing to do so.
Well, do we have a license agreement for the literature?
Rack?
It's in there now? The lit, liter, the rack? I don't remember doing one.
Sure we do.
Yeah, I think we do. Okay, I didn't remember that.
Well, couldn't we just add it under that?
Couldn't we just add it to that?
Or do you have to take a separate one? Because it's right next to it, isn't it?
Right, yeah.
Just like an addendum or something?
I want to speak for the Chamber on this particular topic, but I can certainly ask Larry.
Yeah, because it's going to look contiguous with, with the cabinetry that's moved in there.
And it won't actually be on wheels. I mean, I'm saying cart, but it's, it will be stationary.
Stationary.
Yeah, it's like a bookshelf going in there.
Because we were concerned about it moving and, or somebody grabbing it and rolling it across the...
We could do it, and that'll show Larry then, if he should have come to the meeting. Teach him for going to an awards dinner.
He'd get this done by Monday, right, John?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll figure it out.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions?
No, it sounds like a good idea.
Thank you for coming in. We'll have it on for Monday. Okay, number eight, 222 East Quincy Street, variance request. Were to consider an ordinance granting a zoning code variance request from John Griffin to allow an increased fence height in a R5 residential district. How are you?
Good. How are you doing? Good evening. Sorry, I'm a little unkempt. I just came straight from work. But, um, yeah, I'm just trying to expand the yard space at 222 East Quincy, and by doing that, I want to extend the fence that's currently there, which is seven feet tall, and on the front side and on the, I'm sorry, on the south side and the east side, it would include a privacy screening, which are basically little green nylon slats. And, you know, it would also include landscaping extensions, which it's right now just a field. And I'm currently looking to do that, number one, just, I want to keep it seven feet, so it's cohesive, so it's, my equipment is safe, so it's also out of line of sight. Also, by doing that, the, to the east of the property is a retention area, and people won't be cutting up and going over the tracks from there. There's also, for some reason, seems to be a ton of garbage just seems to blow down that little way, and there really is no line of sight issue by doing that. The Oak Street basically tees into Quincy there, so there's really, you know, no one's going to be able, it's not going to block anybody's vision from making a turn or coming onto Quincy or Oak. So those are the main things.
Okay. I'd like to open it up for public comment. If anyone's here, neighbors, or anybody wants to speak on the issue?
We have no problem with it.
Sounds reasonable.
No problem at all.
Right next door, I can tell you, he's cleaned this property up tremendously.
Looks good.
Really does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming in tonight. It'll be on the agenda for Monday vote.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number nine, 217 North Grant, variance request. Were to consider an ordinance approving requests for the following zoning code variances. A, variance to allow construction of a detached garage over 28 feet in length, and B, variance to allow construction of a garage over 576 square feet in area. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi there. It's Marie and Joe.
It's the Marie and Joe Show.
They look familiar.
Okay.
My secretary's getting all papers here.
Uh-oh. Okay.
We're actually, we converted our one-car garage that we could never park any cars in, in the first place.
Or in the process of.
In the process of converting it into a living room, family room scenario. So I'm looking to build a garage just a little bit bigger than what is, what's the word I want to use?
Allowed.
Allowed.
Good secretary.
Yeah.
You keep her. She's good.
So I could park my two cars and still have room for my lawnmower and my snowblower that I, that I only used twice.
But he's ready.
And, and just have a little bit of storage then for some of the stuff that we've accumulated from our parents' passing and stuff, too, so.
Right now, and I've got pictures, I don't know.
They'll turn them.
There is an old steel, steel shed on the back property.
Okay.
Which we want to get rid of.
There's my two-car garage.
There's his two-car garage. And then, this is actually a picture of the steel shed. This is going to be on the...
It's on the...
The southeast corner of the lot.
Yes.
Yes. And then there's also a picture of the back of the house currently. We're in the process, we're remodeling the house, so we've been kind of...
Yeah, we didn't change the footprint of the house.
We just...
We're just trying to...
Utilize space that we have.
Yeah.
Because it's more economically feasible at this point, I guess you would say. And then here is a picture. This is actually looking to the south of our property. We have a six-foot fence. We have two labs, so we have a six-foot fence. And then here's another picture of the shed that we've got. We're going to access off the alley.
Yes.
Here is a, we're actually going to be using, hopefully, Blue Sky Builders in Downers Grove. So this is a picture, which I'm sure you all have, of all the elevations and the side elevation and everything. We want to keep it just one level. We don't want to go up any higher or anything like that. And here's a copy of the plat. What we want to do is, you can interject on this one.
Okay. What you see in, I guess, yellow, if you want to call it, looks green here. This is going to be the driveway, so it'll be 18 feet of driveway in front of the garage. So we'll turn off the alley in, or onto the driveway, and then the garage is going to be 24 by 30. And the existing fence that we have, we're going to kind of remove and sort of, I don't know, the garage is going to block off the rest of the yard, because we don't want the dogs running around the neighborhood, so.
And the neighbors don't want the dogs running around the neighborhood. I mean, they're good boys, but, yeah. And we do like the privacy, and the neighbors like the privacy of the fence.
Yeah.
So we just kind of, we've been kind of driving through the alleys, and we noticed a couple, one or two of our neighbors have, you know, the big mirrors where you can see if there's cars coming down the alley, and it's not a big, heavily traffic area, so...
Yeah, but, you know, I was thinking about putting something up like that, just, you know, the, the around-corner mirror, as I call it, so you can see what's going on. But, you know, it's not real heavy, per se, so, and I don't think we'll have an issue with getting whacked by somebody coming down the alley or something like that, or us pulling out into somebody.
Okay. Let me open it up to public comments. If there's any neighbors here wanting to speak on it. Doesn't look like there's any. We'll close those public comments. And trustees, any comments?
No, I, I think it's a great improvement to the property.
It's going to be nice to be able to park a car in a garage.
Oh, yeah.
That'd be nice.
And I exit frequently out into the alley, out of my garage. Do you need to source, store some stuff?
Yeah, I would, I'd like to be able to move my, my two cars instead of just...
This shed, this shed is like stacked this high with garden tools.
Oh, yeah.
Boxes and...
Cages.
To see your basement.
Cages for, for the garden and stuff. Oh, it's a wheelbarrow. And, I mean, this thing is like 30 years old or something, and it's, the next time the wind blows, I'm afraid it's going to fall over.
That might be tonight.
So this will make your life a little easier.
Yeah.
It's going to really, your house is...
And I don't want to put a shed in the backyard. I'd rather build a garage big enough that I could store everything in, because, I don't know, sheds...
We don't like the shed idea.
Yeah.
Forget it. Just however big you got it, that's what you'll fill with it, then.
It'll get filled, and then you'll say, you want to go ahead and go for the variance for the shed now?
No, no.
Like, this is, this is a one-shot deal after this, and, yeah, no more.
But the alleys have the last plowed, so you're going to need that snowblower.
And we have four-wheel drive. Both vehicles are four-wheel drive, so.
All righty, well, we appreciate you coming in tonight, and we'll have it on the agenda for Monday.
Looks like a good plan.
Ready?
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 10, Cake in a Box, 17 East Burlington Avenue, variance request and development permit. Were to consider an ordinance granting the following requests from Ismael Echol Were to consider an ordinance granting the following requests from Ismail Echol to operate a clothing and wireless accessories retail store in the B1 limited business district. A, variance to reduce the number of required off-street parking stalls from five spaces to zero spaces, and B, development permit. Good evening.
Good evening, Larry. I'd put everything in a box, Chris, we'd have a bunch of boxes.
So goes the name. Isn't there Saturday Night Live?
Oh geez, don't get there.
All right, so, I'm sure everybody here has been to a bakery, right? Right? When you go to, uh, when you go to a bakery, the first thing, uh, you see when you walk in is obviously a bakery case with all the pastries and, um, donuts, whatever. The concept of this business is, every t-shirt or like sweatpants, jacket, belt, whatever we make is gonna be limited to 100 items, uh, which will be all manufactured through cake, and everything will be packaged in a cake box. So when you walk into the place, it will be modern. Basically, when you walk in, uh, you have two windows that are 12 feet, uh, each on your, on the left-hand side. You'll see a showcase, like a seven and a half foot bakery display case that will have all these, uh, packaged in there. And then you'll have a reception desk on your left, another showcase that says Bake Fresh Daily, which means, um, everything that comes out the press, meaning any screen-printed t-shirt or embroidered, uh, like jacket, belt, et cetera, will only be for that month or whatever, the 45 days, then you'll never see it again. Basically, the, uh, concept of the business is cake in a box, and it's, anything that you buy there, whether it's a phone cover or, you know, a piece of clothing, it's gonna come in a cake box, or like a slice box package, and it's basically in a nutshell. Selling clothing will be for like, um, moms, basically, or high school girls, guys. Uh, baby clothes, because cake's for everybody, so, you know, for all, you know, all types of different clothing. Next thing, it's the, uh, the business, and the men's stuff is like, let's see. This is like a baby blanket for, uh... I don't know if you guys have ever heard of Icy-Ricky or anybody? It's a company that only manufactures like bamboo, uh, material. We work with them exclusively to make...
Could you do me a favor and speak towards the microphone, please?
It's a company that manufactures bamboo, uh, baby material, and we work with them exclusively to have like 100 designs printed of each blanket or, uh, shirt that we do for the children. And for the guys...
Trustee Mill wears hot pink a lot.
Yeah, yeah, girls are. My wife makes all the girls' stuff, so.
I thought this was very interesting when you were at planning and zoning.
I have like a V-neck shirt.
How'd you come up with this idea? How'd you come up with this idea? Just curious.
Uh, my wife does stuff and I'm crazy, I guess. I try, I mean, you gotta have a gimmick to stop stuff.
Yeah, no, I think it's...
So, so your inventory will constantly change, because if you're only gonna sell 100 of each item?
Yeah, exactly, inventory will always change, and then you don't always wanna come back and buy, you know, see everybody with the same exact thing that you just bought at Oakbrook or Yorktown. I like, you know, having different stuff. So you have like, this is a ladies', uh, money. And then you have like this for the summer.
Great. This is your first location?
Yes. We do, uh, we do distribution right now in like Dubai and Israel, and we're gonna try to bring it here. We have an office in Oakbrook, uh, but you know, you got boxes all over the place and...
So you also have web sales?
We're, we're going to have, what, yeah, we have a guy working on the website to do like web sales, and we're gonna do like a baker's dozen, 13 online.
What, what percentage of cash and carry or charge and carry would be out of this store as opposed to web?
Well, no, everything has to be picked up here, because with the internet sales, you get people that, they charge credit cards, whatever, and...
So you're not gonna be selling over this?
No, this is gonna be like a full-blown showroom, uh, we can't afford missing...
Where is the actual sale taking place?
Here.
Okay.
So they always have to pick up here, I mean, even if they input their credit card number.
That, that's, that's kind of what I'm going at, are they, if, can I go on your website, buy something and pick it up there?
Yes, that's the only way you can do it.
That's a problem.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only way we can do it, we can only do it that way now.
Pick it up where? In Oakbrook or in Westmont?
Here.
Well, you can't, you can't buy it off of the, you can only put in your credit card number, it'll hold it, and we have to bring it up here to have the actual card.
Okay, so the, so the...
We've had problems already doing it, so.
So the sale will take place in Westmont and the sales tax will be...
You know, wherever downtown Chicago, you're coming here to pick it up.
Okay, but, so sales tax will be charged locally?
Yeah, because the card has to be swiped through here through a machine.
Okay.
So, everything will be done here.
So what happens with the internet sales then?
Internet sales is just to hold your order, like, if we get a blanket in that's, you know, 45 pieces and you wanna hold it, you have to have your credit card...
So they're reserving it?
...to hold it when you get here.
So it's not a real sale there, it's just...
Yeah, it's just a whole...
They're just reserving it?
To verify it, and then the transaction is not complete until you have an ID with the credit card. Because we've ran into problems where people charge things and then you want a credit back and they get a free product, it's not old-fashioned, it's kind of better, I guess.
Yeah, I agree.
Kind of like the internet in reverse now, where it's...
I kinda like it.
Force them to come to the store.
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, if you, I mean, at the end of the day, if you buy a product online, then you wanna return it, we're gonna get charged back, go through hell with the credit card company, and then, you know, everybody's not happy, so it's not worth it. I'd rather them come to the store, feel the material, see it, buy it, and might buy something else in the showroom.
Do you have a background in retail?
A what?
Do you have a background?
I sold, I sold, uh, Nextel until I got bought out by Sprint for 15 years, I was a master distributor for them, and then, uh, just came up with a clothing idea. We do special phone cases and everything too, but they're like rhinestone cases or shoelaces on the, uh, phone cover. I don't have any of them yet, because everything we do is, that's basically, God, I give it to stores to sell, it's more, uh, nobody's gonna come in every day and buy a phone case, so.
You see expanding your line from the phone items and the clothing?
I think it's mainly gonna be the focus of the clothing, and then kind of like, you know how you go to Target, when you bring your kid with you, you got like candy and all that up front, that'll be the accessories there, if they buy them, they buy them, if they don't, yeah, they do.
The Hello Kitty stuff that he's got in there.
Yeah, basically, right.
And what will be your hours of operation?
Uh, nine in the morning or 10 in the morning, depending, I, when I sit out here, it's like so dead sometimes, and, I don't, you know, I don't know, 8 o'clock, 9 o'clock at night.
I'll ask you the same question I ask every single business that comes onto Kiasse Avenue or in the downtown area. We have on Thursday nights in the summer, cruising nights, which takes up a great deal of parking. We have a Taste of Westmont that takes up virtually almost all parking, and that's for several days. It could be viewed in some cases as a hardship on businesses, but you could also capitalize on it, it's what you choose to do with it. You can make it a hardship, you can make it something good.
Even the carnival.
Um, do you have a problem with that?
No.
Okay.
That's, that's what we need, so.
Especially the carnival rides will be facing your shop.
Yeah.
So, you know, every little girl, if you put hot pink stuff in the window, you're kind of golden.
It could be very good for you.
There's a store over here on the other side. Uh, there, there was a store on the other side of Cash.
Or trustee.
There's a store on the other side of, uh, like a boutique or something, but they're like way overpriced, so. Yeah, they're gone, right. They're like way...
Yeah. Excellent. It's, it's an interesting concept. How many employees do you anticipate you might be?
How many employees?
Employees?
Me and two other people, that's it.
I was thinking of the parking problems.
Yeah, no, uh, no, me and my wife will be in there most of the time, and then there's one other person, another girl, that's it. I mean, unless we, you know, rake in the bucks and, other than that, that's it.
Will you be coming back for any facade grant information? Have we talked to him about that, or?
Not yet.
Not yet? Okay. Make sure you do. Yeah, because we have some...
I'll explain it to you.
We have some nice incentives.
Yeah, because it helps you with, like, you've already, you've done your layout for what you want to put, you know, for your signage and stuff, so, um...
They'll explain all of that.
They will tell you about our matching facade grant.
Okay.
The other thing, I would encourage you to connect with our Chamber of Commerce, Larry Forsberg.
Yeah, John, we'll send that last meeting.
We have a, a really, really vibrant chamber that can help you with networking and things.
Anything that I can do to better the business, I'm gonna try to do it.
Okay, you're also asking for a variance to reduce the number of off-street parking?
Yeah, I guess.
Because the parking lot right across the street, the public parking lot?
Yeah, from planning and zoning, there are six spaces, they're all used by existing tenants within the shopping area, there's no spaces available.
Yeah.
Planning and zoning found there was adequate public parking for this use.
Yeah. Yep.
And I'll open it up to the public, if there's anyone here that has any comment on it, because we have a variance. Not seeing anybody from the public, we'll close that part. Any other comments from the trustees?
Um, has that building been alarmed yet? Do we know? Has it got the new system in it, or?
Ready?
Yeah, it's a kind of keep smoke?
I'm just, I'm just curious as to whether the landlord has upgraded the system or put the system in place yet.
I don't know the answer to that question, but I can find out for you for Monday.
Okay. Yeah, because we're concerned for your safety and your safety of your property.
Do you know if it has smoke detectors?
It has, uh, like two in there, I think, but...
Okay.
Okay. The chief will, he'll check it out. It's his chief wife's, he will...
We can walk through there right after, if you want.
Great. Interesting concept, good luck.
Yeah, good luck. Thank you for coming before us, this will be on, uh, Monday's vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Number 11. Oprah Kills Marriott, 3500 Midwest Road, variance request. Were to consider an ordinance granting a zoning code variance request from Michael Biniek of Laura. All right, I'll take a stab at this one.
Just say LCC Law.
Thank you, LCC.
There you go.
Thank you. On behalf of Vigilant Global to permit more than three antennas on a structure. How do you say that name?
Chanthan Dusy.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Mike Biniek, I'm with the company called LCC Law, we represent Vigilant Global. And what we are proposing this evening is to put up two dish antennas on the existing Oakbrook Marriott rooftop. There are other wireless antennas, this dish antenna will be for the wifi slash broadband spectrum. And basically what's happening in the wireless industry, which I'm mostly familiar with, you're getting into, as you see on TV all the time, these 4G LTE commercials. And basically what's happening is, all the, the cell phone towers are, or cell sites are starting to get overcrowded, because what's happening with all the iPhones and the wifi, they share the same signal as a regular telephone. So you're competing interests. And what Vigilant Global is doing is putting up these dishes to basically help booster the wifi, so that as you get the, the LTE upgrades, you're gonna have more data intensive uses. The, the dishes are to help that, and that will also help the regular cellular customers. And in a location like the Marriott, it's extremely important, because as you know, you have a lot of conventions, a lot of visitors from out of town, they bring their, their, they may not bring their family, so therefore they're in constant contact, they're trying to, uh, do business with their computers, so they need the wifi hookups. And so, broadening that will make the Oakbrook Marriott that much more of a, of an important place for visitors and conventions to use. So that's basically what we're proposing to do. As I said, there's two dishes, and then there would be an equipment cabinet in the middle of the, the roof.
And this is just for the hotel?
No, it does not. It, what, what the microwave antennas, it's a point-to-point system. The wireless is basically a spread spectrum, whereas these dish antennas, they go point-to-point to another site approximately six miles from there, and it all ends up going into a hub. But, because you're gonna have a site there, it also helps the, the Marriott as well.
Okay.
So, is this for the Marriott specifically? Is that the first, okay.
No, it's just...
So it's just a benefit to the Marriott?
It will benefit, because they'll have obviously better signal, so those people, when they come to a conference, they'll definitely benefit.
Um, just so that we're clear, it's, um, when you say dish, it doesn't look like a, um, dish TV system, it looks like those big white, looks like drums.
Yes, it does.
The flat drums that you see on a lot of the towers now, those big ones.
Yeah.
And what's the, they're six feet across, and what's the, what's the height off of the roof deck?
It's, it goes up, it's not very high off the roof deck, what they are, they're set on skids, and it's a couple feet off, but it'll, it'll extend about 10 feet high, you know, sitting on that skid, it'll, it's a six foot, as, as you mentioned, six foot diameter. So it'll be about 10 foot high.
How, how high above the, um, the, because I know the roof deck is lower than the facade on the hotel, how high above the facade is?
That's what I was saying, it's about 10 feet above that.
So it's gonna go 10 feet above that?
Right, because it has to have, it has to clear that parapet, so basically the, the bottom of that drum will be right at about the bottom of that parapet.
I think one of the questions then is how far back off the roof edge is it set, so that it's not visible from the street, or if it is, it's visible from...
From, you know, Oakbrook can see it, but Westmont can't.
And comparably, how does it relate to the other antennas that are there?
I believe, did you, did you get a packet of information that I submitted?
Yes, we have it here.
It has photo simulations in the very back of it. And you can see, these are actual photos that we, we took from different areas, and then you look at the existing and the proposed, you really can't see it. It, it kind of blends in there.
Yeah.
I did check all your mathematical calculations.
Yeah, me too.
They're not my calculations, I guarantee you.
Yeah, you really don't see it.
Still getting there. There it is.
Okay. Yeah, they're, they're back.
Yeah, they're not, they don't sit right on the edge of the roof, but they have to clear that parapet in order to, to work on a line of sight.
Because you need unobstructed...
Yep, they have to be line of sight, and that's the critical.
Now, only certain providers use these, like Cricket I saw in there, and what was the other one?
Um, it's, it's yet to be determined who it will be, because what happens is you have companies like Vigilant, they will go out and sell the, their spectrum, their signal to the carriers that choose to use them. It's not just the carriers, it's wifi providers and all those types of users as well. So, like I said, the carriers themselves, they're doing these LTE upgrades all over the place. That's primarily for their use, because the LTE antenna split off that, that spectrum from the, the regular cell calls. But this will help it, because you're also increasing that, that capability.
What's the next tower that you're going to, line of sight? What's the next, um, elevated system?
To be honest with you, I don't know.
Okay. So, so far you've only got, for these particular ones, you've got Cricket signed up, and you're gonna, what?
No, I didn't say that.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Are you asking to put these up and then this will become part of a sales, to say we have these up here and you can use them?
Vigilant is not selling them, they sell the, the capabilities of the wifi, that they have a hub that transmits, just like, for example, it'd be like AT&amp;T having a cell tower. They're not gonna sell that signal, they're selling the capability of using that signal.
Right.
So they're not selling those dishes to anybody, they're gonna maintain them.
I know, but I'm saying as I, because I've never heard of Vigilant, so I'm wondering who is it Vigilant themselves that are using these dishes?
They're using the dishes, but they're, they would have to sell that signal to somebody, someone would have to purchase the capabilities to use that.
Okay, now that's my question, is, are you putting these up here, do you want to put them up on the Marriott to then sell them, to sell the capabilities? Or do you have people lined up that you need them up there for existing customers?
To be honest with you, I don't know that. To be honest with you, I don't know that.
Basically, what they do is they distribute the signal for like five, ten, or whatever. Hey, the carriers need that to push this signal on another Wi-Fi.
Former Nextel guy.
Yeah, I know.
Well, how many carriers can your equipment handle?
There's no specific number.
So, just whatever happens to grab the signal.
Coming back in the future, if things go well, you're going to need more of these put up there because...
The, the whole thing with this industry, I could never venture to guess. I mean, it's, the technology is constantly changing. It could be more, or it could be, this is it. It's, I've been asked that. I've been in this, the wireless industry for 12 years, and I've been asked that question. And, you know, back when I first started, it was putting up towers. That's all there was. And now, it's all these upgrades. And that's what the industries, the wireless industry and the broadband industry, it's more about upgrading your equipment so that you can...
So, who's paying for this?
Vigilant.
In the hopes to sell it to all the carriers to buy it, but they have nothing guaranteed. They're doing it and hoping that they're going to do it?
Well, they, you know, they, they've got, they've got people out there. It's, it's not a hope, you know...
There's got to be a need, or they wouldn't be doing it.
Well, wait a second. That's, there is a need, but it also ups the ante on the sales to say they're in place. There are limited spots for line of sight, certainly in this town, without building new cell tower antennas and all of that. I got to tell you, I have a problem with putting up additional antennas that are there to, for no specific carriers to use, because the carriers that we have up there, they come in to us repeatedly for the, the water towers, the Marriott, to say, okay, you know, they're actually smaller antennas with, with technology and all that, and we put them up there. But I have a problem because of our limited space going to antennas that are up there without a specific carrier or carriers lined up to use them and put them online, and to put them up there just to say, hey, we have these capabilities now.
Well, I, to that point, I guess I would look at it, it's like opening a grocery store. You have to open the grocery store before you can sell your products to people. You know those people are going to come into the grocery store. You can't say, I've got 50 people lined up outside my door before you open that grocery store. You have to have the product before you can sell the product.
I understand what you're saying, but the tower, the antennas that we have on existing structures, be they water tower, cell, cell towers, or the Marriott, our existing businesses with, you know, like, say, we've got, I mean, we've got AT&amp;T up there, we've got T-Mobile up there, we've got this, you're in a different category.
I don't agree.
Actually, we've always, typically, the carrier comes before us.
Well, I don't agree with that, though, because...
But that's the way it's always been with us. The carrier usually comes to us.
There's a, there's a trend where companies are taking over these carrier facilities.
I guess we just haven't seen it yet.
But this isn't taking over carrier facilities?
I know, but there is a trend out there. And we get solicitations all the time on some of the antennas that we've approved on our structures, where companies want to take them over on behalf of these carriers. So, there, there seems to be change in the industry.
Right. But if they take them over, well, anyway, I...
And I guess you have to look at it this way as well. When AT&amp;T, Verizon, Sprint, Nextel, and all them built their network, they weren't there yet. They weren't having service until they built their network. And that's the same thing with this broadband Wi-Fi. They've got to build the network in order to sell it. You can't just sell something if you don't have a, a working product.
I don't believe in this town, with all due respect, that we've ever put antennas on our structures, which, mind you, we got to have them, and people hate them, without there being an existing carrier ready to go. Now, if you stood here and said, here's who's online, and this is why we need these, because we're servicing these clients, it's a different story. But I'm not hearing that.
Well, Vigilant is the client. They're distributing this product. They have vested interest to sell that signal. So, we do have a company, it is Vigilant Global. They are the ones that have, are investing in this product to sell it. They're the jewel that's coming into your town to sell those groceries. They're the, the company that has that vested interest in selling that product.
They must know if some of the carriers want the signal in that location.
Absolutely.
So, there are, they have people lined up. They have customers lined up. You just don't know who they are.
These companies do not invest this kind of money that it costs to put that equipment up unless they know they're going to get service.
So, there's kind of three benefits here, though. Number one, there's no more towers.
Right.
Being built. Number two is the service will be better in the area.
Correct.
And number three, it helps the Marriott get in some...
We don't know that service can be better.
No, these same things go on towers. They build towers. You see them with just these dishes on them.
What he's saying is no new towers.
No new towers, though.
Right. But I, but this, you know, saying there's no new towers being built, that's, you know, we've got limited space up there, is what I'm concerned about.
Our ordinance is designed, it was designed originally, to try to create and sound to go on existing structures. And this is a private structure. When they've gone on public structures, like our water towers, we reap the benefits of the rental of that space. But that, that was a whole design years ago when the board created the ordinance, was we don't want individual standalone towers created all over town.
Right.
We wanted to go on existing structures.
I understand that.
Kind of like Field of Dreams, build it and they will come, I guess, but, I don't know. I'm trying to visualize, because like you said, we've always had the company themselves come in, and, and I know it was, didn't seem like that long ago, we approved something for the Oakbrook Hills, plus something on Pasquenelli. There's so many towers on top of those tall buildings there. My question, then, would be, is this going to make some of those towers now obsolete or be in such competition from the AT&amp;T or Sprint or whoever towers are up there that, you know, are we causing a problem?
Serves a different purpose than the cell.
It's a boosting, it's a boosting system, is what it is. It does, enhances the actual capability of the Wi-Fi program itself. Because, as he was saying, the networks are getting overloaded in such a way that your phones, if you notice, sometimes are not operating as fast if you've got Wi-Fi in a particular spot like that, that it may not operate at a fast speed. What they're doing is upgrading to where they can increase the signal for those particular carriers in order to enhance the Wi-Fi capability of the product.
And an example of that is, in my house, I, I've got an iPhone. I'm on there, I'm surfing the internet, looking at the White Sox score or whatever. My wife is doing something else. My daughter's taking a picture, sending a text to a friend. Someone's trying to use the computer, and my other daughter's using her cellphone to call a friend. All these are competing for that signal to connect that call. And what's happening is, with all the data that's going out, you know, as I mentioned, there's three of us using data, it's blowing that regular signal away. It's just making it so that a regular phone call before the iPhones and all the wireless data started coming into vogue, you could make a call a lot better. And now, what this broadband does, the, the dishes, it separates and enhances those people that are using their iPhones and sending data, sending emails and stuff like that, so that they have a better signal. And then the wireless users then are able to take that side of the, the signal and get the enhanced signal.
It's not as crowded?
No, not at all.
Which is a good thing. I think the big concern that I, that everybody's kind of talking about is, you know, we want to say it's going to improve, yeah, I want, I want you to tell me, AT&amp;T's gone, it's going to improve my signal in town. I would love you to say that.
I can.
Can you find out from your, I mean, can you find out for us on who's, who's, you know, who's on the, on the list to sign up for it? So, we can say, hey, we're doing this because it's going to affect Singular, it's going to affect AT&amp;T, it's going to affect Sprint, it's going to affect all those.
It will affect all of them, in a, in a positive manner. Absolutely.
Time out a second. Here's, here's the concern. You're coming in as a new company, okay? It's Vigil Global. And what it's sounding like to us is that you're going to put these on top of this building, and you really can't tell us definitely that AT&amp;T or Verizon or, you know, T-Mobile or any of them are actually already saying they're going to use your service. And the question we're asking of your company is, is there anything right now in the works that these companies are asking Vigil Global for this to enhance their signals and their service?
Ultimately, it does enhance their service. We don't have to contract with them to enhance their service.
Okay, but then, well, then, how would, then what would be the purpose if you don't have a contract with them to enhance the signal? How are you going to plug your funds for that?
We're not doubting the technology. Technology's not being doubted. It's, what's being doubted is...
It's not the technology, it's a question of, of how and who. And the question is, how, how does Vigil Global make any money off of this if they don't charge somebody something for the use of this signal?
I understand that.
Am I worried about the Marriott getting rent?
Yeah, see, I don't know that I have a problem with who your customer is. I truly don't. The way I envision this, and tell me if, if I'm right, okay, with the iPhone, for example, iPhone-to-iPhone texting is not through the phone. It's not, it's not through the Verizon or AT&amp;T. It's through the web.
Right.
That's what this is going to help with. Sometimes that's not available, because everybody's doing the, you know, the texting iPhone-to-iphone, you know, at no charge. I mean, I really don't care who your customer is. If, if Marriott's going to, you know, benefit by it, and it can't be seen by home, I, I don't, that's between you and Marriott. I, it doesn't, I don't...
Well, this is the problem that I have, is that if you don't know where your next line of sight, um, tower is, and you sign up whomever, and I don't care who it is, and the line of sight in order to transmit the signal means you got to raise those dishes 12 more feet, then I'm going to have a problem with it.
But then they're not going to have to come back.
But we don't have the crystal ball to know. They'd have to come back for that.
I know, but they got to know where they're putting them.
You would think they would know. They know how high, they know the specs, they've got all the pay, the numbers in here, but they can't tell us where they're coming from.
You don't put stuff up that requires line of sight without having the next relay.
They must see it someplace.
You have to know where it is.
Can you find out that information for us by Monday?
I will try. There, there's other sites that are out there, and all they have to do is angle their, their microwave dish to hit those sites.
So, it might not be, so it might not be your site, Vigilant?
No, they have reciprocal agreements. And, and, you know, you keep asking me for specific clients. When you get on your cellphone, I, I have AT&amp;T, for example. My call may not go to an AT&amp;T tower. It may actually go to a Verizon tower.
That's what I was getting at with the, it's kind of like the old roaming that these...
That's exactly what it is. Right. So, this has a similar principle. It's not specifically, you have to work with Vigilant to get that signal. It, it's...
My concern was, I didn't want to, we put these towers up on these buildings, and I didn't want to make them obsolete now, because Vigilant comes around with this big drum, and it's going to make all the other towers obsolete. That was my only concern.
Not our problem, it's technology.
If they're still going to be working hand-in-hand, you know, that's not...
They'll be obsolete soon enough.
And, and we can't stop that.
And I, and I'm not worried. I'm sure Oakbrook wouldn't allow them, or somebody wouldn't allow them if they didn't have some kind of an agreement with them, so that's, that's their problem.
So, just so I'm clear, what, would you like me to look into for Monday? Where the other sites are?
Thank you.
It would be curious, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they, they work on a system that needs line of sight. Where are the, where are the closest line of sight, sites?
Understood.
One with a GHT, one with an ITS.
It, it could be that this is the first site, and they're building their network out from there, too. I don't know that, I will look into that.
Okay. Because I would like to know that if that's the case. Thank you.
I think it sounds good.
Would you like to open up for any public comment, which I don't think there's going to be any, but, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It'll be on the vote for Monday.
Thanks. We're a tough crowd over here, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, number 12. Standard Market 333 East Ogden Avenue. Waiver request. Board to consider an ordinance approving a waiver request for Standard Market, which would allow lawn sprinkling between 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM on odd days of the week.
Yes, sir. So, our, our situation is simple. Obviously, we've got the new facility over on Ogden Avenue, and just turned the sprinklers on for the very first time. And as they were set up, we heard that the city ordinance, or the village ordinance was, are allotted times were odd days, 6:00 AM to 9:00 AM, or 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Issue, of course, being that we have customers.
You don't like getting your customers wet.
We don't. We actually sprayed an employee the first time we turned them on.
Could you just give us your name and who, which you represent?
Sure, absolutely. My name's Sam Anderson, I'm the store director for our Westmont site.
Thank you.
So, so that's simply it. We just requested that at any time in the allotted, you know, amount of time that we had requested, doesn't really matter to us, it would be up, of course, to, to you, but it's the time where we don't have either employees or customers, you know, in, in water shot of the sprinklers.
Does Bakersfield have a front lawn?
It, it has a front side lawn, as well as kind of the, the easement properties in between the drive.
Going to be back here for that?
Uh, no, that's a separate issue.
Okay. Because I just thought, hey, you know, we're, we're, we're really actually not as tough as it sounds.
Sure, sure. No, I, I did like all the grocery store analogies, though.
You want to ask that gentleman to just...
Just not the jewel, but I know all about opening a grocery store.
I know. We were going to correct him, but we're pretty nice.
That's right.
I have no issue with it.
Uh, I mean, we, we certainly could if you were open to it. You know, they, you know, Vince didn't send me to ask for Bakersfield, but I, I wouldn't see a harm in it.
I mean, hey, you know...
To certainly request that as well.
Less hours than what it is now, so I...
It's going to be the same situation.
We literally need it once a day, just at some point in the overnight.
Yeah.
Can we, can we do that?
Yes, I just told them. Just have to amend the agenda to clarify that and amend the ordinance.
Yeah, it's going to be the same situation there.
All right, I'm saying Bakersfield can water, too. We want it to look as lovely in July as it does now.
Yes, we do.
Be careful with their water rates. Yeah, tell Vince to just sit down when he opens the bill.
No, no, no. No, so they're, I mean, they're on a cycle system. It just takes a lot of amount of time, you know, they go phase by phase. That's part of the issue, is that 6:00 AM is fine to start, but at 7, 8 o'clock, it's out in the parking lot. So, they, they only go for an hour at any set time.
Bakersfield will have to water on even days.
Correct. On the other side of the street, sure.
That's right, because they're on the other side of the street.
Take that message back, though.
Right. I will.
Okay.
Any other comments from trustees?
I don't think it's a problem.
Thank you for coming before us. It'll be on the vote for Monday. Number 13. Electric aggregation intergovernmental agreement, IGA. Board to consider an ordinance adopting an IGA with the Village of Downers Grove to create an electric aggregation cooperative.
I completely misstated earlier that we had on the agenda our agreement with our consultant that was already approved. What I was thinking about was this agreement, the IGA with Downers Grove, and I know the village attorneys had conversations as recently as this afternoon with the Downers Grove village attorney, and I think we're pretty good with all of the terms. John, was there something that you wanted to, there was one item, I think, that was changed, right?
Just one, word got removed in item 3B under term. It talked about a joint power agreement. And what this contemplates is that the communities jointly will go out to RFP and receive bids from power suppliers for, you know, the cost of electricity. Once that, those bids come in and a supplier is selected jointly by the communities, each party will negotiate its own power supply agreement. And the agreement, we have the option to do a joint power supply agreement, but it's anticipated that we'll do separate agreements. The IGA talked about a joint power supply agreement, and so we just eliminated the word "joint" because elsewhere in the agreement, it says each party will negotiate their own.
We, we talked a little bit more about it this afternoon when we met, and their village attorney was part of the conversation. We anticipate a uniform agreement, probably with like amendments or addendums representing each of the community. But our goal is to try to come up with a complete agreement on, you know, the mixture of the type of power we want, because we feel that that's going to be the most advantageous cost to, to the residents. One of the things we talked about, and I know there is language in the plant, governance plan about having some type of green energy involved, and we're going to be asking for prices based on that. And one of the thoughts is that maybe that's an option that we just make available to those residents that want to go for that. those residents that want to go for that. But we're going to, you know, that'll be determined once we get the prices back for all the different options that we have in the matrix, and we'll come back with that recommendation.
Do you see two different pricings then for Downers Grove and us, since we have two different agreements, or are we still trying to work for one price?
No. We are trying to come up with one pricing structure. That's kind of what we agreed this afternoon. One community may say, okay, we want to make available to our, some of our residents the option to go out and sign for, I forget the percentages, there's like 20%, 50% green energy certificates. That option might be different, but the basic price, I think our goal is to try to have it be uniform because we feel that that's going to be the cheapest price for everybody.
Okay.
That's our goal.
Comments or questions? Okay, that'll be on the agenda for Monday then. Number 14. Ordinance revision, municipal code section 1-8. Board to consider an ordinance revising section 1-8. General penalty for violation of code, continuing violations, to amend the minimum fine for a violation where no other penalty is expressly set forth.
This is the minimum fine that a judge can assess to someone for a village ordinance violation in traffic court or field court. Currently now it's $10, and in researching this, it appears it may not have been amended since 1972. $75 is currently the bond which we charge. Actually, for other offenses, it's higher. Currently for village ordinance, 75. This brings it in line more alongs with the bonding and assists our village prosecutor when she asks for a minimum fine to a judge, upping it to more current figures.
Questions or comments?
Good enough.
Thank you, Chief. We'll put it on the agenda for Monday. 15. Parking penalties review, code of ordinance section 54-101. Board to consider an ordinance increasing the fine amount for parking violations and for unpaid parking fines previously assessed.
We're reviewing our fines for parking tickets currently at $20. We did a survey of local communities. On an average, it turned out to be $28. Last time this ordinance also was amended to increase a fine was 10 years ago in 2002. In reading that ordinance at that time, it appeared that that ordinance was reviewed 10 years prior. So in keeping up with that 10-year cycle, we are asking the board to increase the fine for parking tickets from the current fine of $20 to $30. And also for the late fees where someone has not paid the notices and we have to send money off to collections, the current fine is $100. We're asking that to be increased to $200. There is a $25 processing fee for that, and that would remain the same.
Can I answer your questions? Okay. Thank you. This will be on the agenda also for Monday. Declaration of Village property as surplus. Board to consider an ordinance declaring certain vehicles, equipment as surplus village property to be sold at the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference auction. Yes, sir.
Pretty much describes it well. There are certain pieces of equipment and vehicles that have either been replaced or otherwise outlived their useful life. And there's two parts to the ordinance. One is to declare them surplus so that they can be sold, and then the method of disposition would be the authorize us to take them to the DuPage County DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference auction that will be held on June 9th.
It was just three items, right?
Three items, right.
Three pieces, right.
Can I answer your questions?
No, I forgot to check the ordinance. Does the ordinance state if they're unsold, what happens? Does the village manager otherwise have authority to dispose of them?
I don't know if that's put in there. The ordinance was actually attached, it's in a format... I doubt that that language is in there because the format is, I'll call it the boilerplate for DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference in a form that's acceptable to them.
It does say that, John. It says if items are unsuccessful sold at auction, they will be sold or otherwise disposed of as authorized by the village manager.
I see it. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Number 17. Proclamations. Board to consider motions approving the following proclamations. Honoring Westmont's village clerk and declaring the week of April 29 through May 5, 2012, as National Village Clerks Week. Declaring the week of May 13 through May 19, 2012, as National Police Week and declaring Tuesday, May 15, 2012, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in Westmont. And honoring Westmont's emergency medical services team and proclaiming the week of May 20 through 26, 2012, as National EMS Week in Westmont. And we'll be reading those on Monday.
And we had one addition, not on the original agenda, but proclaiming the week of May 6 to 12 as Public Service Employees Recognition Week.
Fiscal year 2012-13 budget. Board to consider a resolution adapting the fiscal year 2012-13 budget.
Mr. Parker?
All right. Good evening. Presentation prepared. In the interest of time, I've tried to streamline it a little bit from some of our past budget meetings, but I wanted to start off by kind of going over a little bit about the budget process, especially for the benefit of the public watching that are able to see that this is, this budget process is something that's been discussed in detail by the board through a series of budget workshops and has been prepared by staff over a long period of time. And we're now reaching the end of this process. So basically, our overall, after all the revisions and all the changes from all the budget meetings, our new, our final numbers are, we're looking at estimated revenues village-wide of about $32 million, estimated expenses of about $35 million, which is about $3 million deficit. As you can see on the same slide, we're looking at about $10.5 million as a carry forward, so we're looking at cash balance at the end of the year of about $7.3 million. And because several of our funds are capital funds where you put money aside, you save money for large projects, that makes a lot of sense. Wanted to give sort of a brief overview of the economy as we see it right now. This chart illustrates the University of Illinois Flash Index, which has proven to be a fairly good indicator of the economy here in Westmont. As you can see, it took a drop, but then this past fiscal year's been doing very well and is now, in fact, above 100%, which means we're seeing some growth. We're still cautious in our optimism. As you can see from this chart, our property values have been dropping the last couple of years. This past year, it didn't drop as much as it has in prior years, so that's, again, encouraging. But basically, our, the philosophy we used when estimating revenues was assuming they were going to be tracking pretty close to what they were this past year. This chart shows a monthly analysis of sales tax, which is one of our major revenue sources. The green line is the most current fiscal year, and you can see while it started low in May, the rest of the months this year, it has exceeded the other lines, so it's been above, generally been above the yellow, the orange, and the gray lines for our past three years. And it even reached above the red line in December. And so we're encouraged by that. It's doing well. And again, we're encouraged by this. It seems that the economy's seeming to stabilize a little bit. As an example of this, this is our sales tax revenue, and we've seen that many of our other revenue sources are very similar to this. You can see it dropped and then there's been an increase again. This year, we budgeted in this past fiscal year to have $6.2 million. We're projecting about $6.4 million, and so we're conservatively budgeting about $6.3 million. So we're budgeting a little bit more than we budgeted last year for revenue, but a little bit less than what we're projecting to actually get in to be conservative. And that's very consistent across most of our revenue sources. As an overview of the general fund, we're looking at total revenues of about $20.2 million, total expenses of about $20.5, with a net change of about $291,000 in deficit. Now typically, that's not the way you'd like to see your general fund because that's mostly your operating fund. However, we do have several non-operating sources that are included in this. And so when you look at the total operating net, what you're actually looking at is about $3,000 surplus, which is good. That's what we would like to see. It's in the right direction. These are the non-operating sources that I mentioned, so part of that deficit is offset by the fact that we are pulling money from our federal narcotics expenses. So it's listed as an expense, but it's coming from an account specifically dedicated for those type of purposes, for the federal and the state. There's also a couple of reimbursements back and forth that actually will hit the due-to, due-from accounts rather than the expense accounts. And then we have some carryovers of about $65,000. So when we look at our net of the negative $291,000, really because of these other pieces to consider, we're really looking at a net of about $3,000 to the good. Here are some of the things that are included in the budget. Tentatively, it includes the single-family licensing, which is cost neutral because there's revenue to offset the expenses. It includes community projects such as TIF and Comprehensive Plan. It includes holiday decorations downtown. It includes money for a potential intergovernmental agreement with the Park District regarding landscaping for some tree replacement. It includes some problem-oriented policing detectives, crime-free housing program, the downtown development grants, also known as the facade grants, who were mentioned earlier today. And then we've got some additional funds for writing an emergency operation plan. There, of course, were some reductions in here. One of the reductions that was discussed was reducing the calendar newsletter costs, looking at some other alternatives there. Another item which is not a reduction in expense but kind of an increase in revenues was the decision to bill events such as Taste of Westmont and Red, White &amp; Barbecue for the full cost of the police staffing at the full overtime rate. And then we're looking at some of the things we've done over the past several years, such as postponing replacements, building maintenance, and then kind of reducing the uniforms and training requests. The personnel aspects in this budget, we're looking at some additional personnel. We're looking at for the single-family licensing program to go through, we'd be looking at a part-time administrative assistant and a full-time code enforcement officer. As I mentioned previously, it includes two problem-oriented policing detectives, and then it also looks and contemplates replacing a couple of vacant positions currently. Included in the budget is a general wage adjustment. The FOP union by contract will have a wage adjustment. They'll get a 1% increase on May 1, and then another 1% increase halfway through the fiscal year on November 1, which will be an average increase to them this year of 1.5%. The budget also includes for non-union employees, a 1.5% increase, which they would just receive right up front on May 1. We've got, the next few slides, just kind of go over some of the other funds just briefly. We're looking at a projected carry forward of about $2.1 million in our vehicle replacement program. And again, this is a forward-funded program, and we've got some large cost expenditures in the next few years for some high-dollar amounts. And so the $2.1 million is to set aside for those types of purchases so that we don't need to lease, we don't need to pay the interest rates, we're able to have the interest kind of working on our side instead of against us. The Capital Projects Fund, we're looking at a projected carry forward of about $1.1, almost $1.2 million. It includes $288,000 from local motor fuel tax being directed into this fund. It's got several carryovers, and this is also the fund where we have our, the majority of our debt payments. The Water Fund, you can see, this is part of the large deficit we talked about at the beginning with our capital funds. You can see we're looking at revenues of about $6.8 million and expenses of about $8.2. And the reason for this is, as the board's well aware, over the past, so this year and last year, the Water Department has proposed some infrastructure plans, and there's roughly $1.6 million coming in in annual revenue for this infrastructure improvements. And this year in the budget, the Water Division has initial expenses of about $2.5 million. So the plan is for the Water Division to dip into the reserves this year to be able to perform some of these initial infrastructure plans, then to, in the following years, not spend quite as much of the $1.6 million so that we can build those reserves up again. The Motor Fuel Tax Fund is another one where there's a large, where there's appears to be a large initial deficit just in this year alone because we're coming forward with a balance of about $2.2 million. And then we've got about $2.6 million worth of expenses with the $700,000 of revenues. As was discussed at some of the budget workshops, this is the account from which we pay the state when we have kind of our copayment where the state funds a large portion of the project, we fund a portion, but we have to wait for the state to bill us. There's several projects outstanding that we're waiting for the state to bill us, and so in order for us to remember and to know that we don't really have that, that a portion of that $2.2 million is really committed for funding these programs for the state, we continue to carry forward the cost to fund these programs. It also includes $905,000 for road resurfacing. That's kind of a very brief overview of the stuff that's been discussed in a lot of depth at prior meetings, but I don't know if there's any additional questions or comments at this point.
I'd like to thank you, and I know the board, too, for all the many, many, more time, many hours that you've put in working on this budget and the people that you work with, through the staff. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that, and it's definitely been a lot of work from a lot of different people. I know the board members have put in lots of time in these meetings, the departments have put in a lot of time preparing the budget. It's definitely been a great joint effort, and there's been a lot of people that have put in a lot of time for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I answer your questions?
You took four meetings and summarized it very nicely.
Yeah.
Because we had four very long meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
No, sir.
The only comment that I have is, as the budget stands, as we're looking at it right now, there are no bonds whatsoever in this budget.
That's correct.
Considering issuing it all, correct?
That's correct. We understood the direction was the board wanted to go ahead and begin some discussions about how the process would work, and that's why we're going to have the joint meeting on the 17th. So we're going to have the consultant come in.
Yes, and we will be able to, if, depending on what's decided at that meeting on the 17th, at the direction of the board, we can certainly take into account bonds as we prepare the appropriations ordinance, so that will give us an opportunity to roll those into it if there is further discussion at that meeting.
But that would not happen, we would do nothing until after November 20, is what we're...
Yes, I mean, at this point, that's what we're...
That's what we understand the board's direction.
Right, the board's direction to be...
Not until after the election, right?
No, just because we appropriated for it would not mean we'd have to spend it. It would just be in preparation.
It's up for discussion.
Right, is it just in case? Yep.
Now, even if we appropriated for it, when we get to that point and the answer's no, they can go away, right?
Correct.
We don't have to issue the bond.
Right, right. I mean, that's totally clear direction, and our understanding is you don't want a situation where we would have to put on the tax levy.
That's right.
And so what we would be doing is putting the steps together in case things felt that way, where we felt like we could go forward with it, but it would be up to the board to give us that direction. We're not going to do that. If you don't appropriate for the money, the revenue, and you receive it, you can't spend it unless you appropriate it. So we would probably put in appropriation ordinance, but again, that would mean we're going to spend it without your direction.
Well, we've got the consultant coming out to educate us a little bit on it. We have to be sensitive to the public's concern with, you know, additional taxes. I know I got my tax bill in mind.
Yeah, again, just to remind anybody who hasn't followed any of the discussions, the bonding idea was to try to accelerate resurfacing program throughout the community, which is what a number of communities in the area are doing, because we've all fallen behind in these difficult economic times on trying to keep our road infrastructures up to where they should be.
I know we'll have more conversation about it, but when I really think about it, we were very late on TIF, we were very late on comp plan, we are always late. And communities around us are thriving, and they've all had bond issues, and as our streets continue to crumble, people are going to move out of town or not want to move in. I would certainly like to at least explore it, but only, only if we can pay for it. Obviously, I wouldn't do it if we couldn't pay for it, but I think we have to talk about it.
I could sit here and tell you right now, if it doesn't pass in November, we can't afford it. We can't afford to mortgage 20 years out.
Well, we don't know that. That's, you know, we've got to, that's what we have to look at. We don't have the crystal ball.
Well, it's very simple. You borrow, you borrow, you're borrowing $9 million, and by the time you get done with the interest, you're paying, you're paying probably...
It's $14 million in interest on a $9 million bond.
... $13 million in interest over 20 years. That's outrageous.
Yeah, if we don't retain home rule status, the amount of cuts we would have to make to sustain that, pay for that bond issue would be tremendous.
Right.
So I think that's why the board wants us to wait, but we're going to do our effort to try to provide education up to that point in time.
Yeah, we need to at least talk about it.
And I think that's the best we can do. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Spencer.
Very nice.
Number 19. Finance ordinance.
Wave the reading.
Okay, purchase orders. Comics on purchase orders. Okay, and I don't see that we have a request for executive session tonight.
Wow.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Before that, I would just like to point out that we, with a heavy agenda like that